And we're getting the sheet for the.
Yeah, I just got it. I just noticed that's the same system too.
Yeah.
Will you have any time? Will you have any time to sleep? Because you are someone who like. All right.
All of the meeting, all the city council, we don't do for November 13, 2020. Quite salute. I pledge allegiance to the United States of America, which stands one nation under God, indivisible, with a single justice for all. The treasurer called up, all please.
Councilmember Kandev. I'm sorry, councilmember Kandev.
Yes, present on Zoom.
Councilmember Colomore.
Here.
Councilmember Whitner.
Present on Zoom.
Councilmember Lesnow.
Here.
Councilmember Coroner.
Here.
And Mayor Casanelli.
Here.
Okay, approval of the agenda. Let's see. Second. All in favor, Director Kandev, vote yes. All in favor, I, I, so, oh, governor. I and I, all, still approve, consent agenda. So we're approving the consent agenda there. Motion in the second by councillor Coroner to approve the consent agenda, and second by councillor Lesnow, all. Any corrections or additions? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Oh, ma'am.
Oh, I apologize.
Okay, public comments. All for public comments in this case. Uh, this is for your information, I'm taking on hearing. Okay, um. Staff reports. Um, chief, you have anything more to say? No, you have my report, yeah, good at getting ready for a happy Thanksgiving, yes. With the, um, where, you have anything? We get over. That are, being last month, we did. Uh, yeah. You know, we can't be, it was anything, but, uh. You know. Talked a lot about. The instructors, the, the question, but anything. Uh, we, we, as a group, but we. Uh, we're also talking down funding projects.
I'm, I'm sorry, I can hear about every 10th word.
You, you right. How's that?
Those two were good.
Yeah, we talked about, um. Parking lot, plenty of parking lot. You know, issues kind of funding for it, um, would need one of them. Right, he's looking at that. Talking to the, the classes of $5,000.
All right, now I've lost you completely again, I don't know why.
Not only you folks enough, but not. Okay, all right, all right.
Make sure that.
We talked about funding for the parking lot, the way more than we anticipated, we're going to need. Need multiple funds, uh, grants to, to parks and like that. Um, we're going to pursue an exonerating. Uh, which, uh, while I'm funding for parking lots, we'll review all the city roads. Put road, possibly put road, but there aren't roads, maybe fix some roads. Um, so that's what, then you're really working on. Uh, then we were able to reach out to, uh, Michelle Thompson. And, uh, we, she works at the Department of Archaeological, Big Store, Innovation. And, uh, we'd like to start having a sort of group here in town. Um, to the big five committee members, including the subcommittee chairperson and, uh. And that is going to be Amy. She co-chair that. And, uh, we're going to meet Wednesday to talk about that, look at five committee members. Uh, work with their own, and background in that. Uh, so we're moving rather well. Any questions?
Thank you, uh, we're still getting some comments on Zoom, but it's always a good part, uh, councilman Colomore, I make sure your, uh, your computer is.
And I have, I have to say that. That Larry, you, you got loud enough, but you never got over the distortion. That the microphone was putting into your words, so it was really very difficult for me to follow you.
And councilman Lesnow, you are all garbled up too.
I think he's just doing technical troubleshooting though, so it's a little less important than. Than the Mr. Hamilton's substantive report from the downtown revitalization.
Can anybody hear me now?
Perfectly.
Okay.
Yeah, you're perfect. There.
And by the way, I'm concentrating to hear, which means I look mean and aggressive and all sorts of negative things, but I'm just concentrating honest.
You don't look any of those things, councilman Kandev.
Maybe because you know me better.
What Mr. Sprederman said, um, seemed true to me, whi- which is that, um. It seems like the microphones people are speaking into, that's not what's being picked up, it sounds.
That's, that's correct, it's Holly's computer.
Yeah, so it's, so it's sort of like, you know, something that is listening to the entire room. Um. And, and not the speaker. Um, we do this every couple of weeks, we do this pretty much every meeting, and now that I'm in the same position as, uh. As the, the, uh. The, the local people who have to participate by Zoom. I feel their pain. And, uh, yeah, it's, uh, when people say there's an echo, I didn't quite understand before, because when, when. People say there's an echo on Zoom, it might really be a like mechanical robotic sounding echo, but this isn't that. It's just sort of, uh, you could hear the whole room, it's just a, a big dull. Sound, it seems like mics aren't working.
Is this any better at all?
Yes.
Can I have everybody at the table, please test your microphones for the audience?
Testing, one, two, three, four.
Sounded good.
One. Testing.
One, two, three. Better, worse, audience on Zoom?
Good.
Testing, one, two, three, four.
Good. And now, what, what, I'm sorry, Mr. Sprederman, go ahead.
Thanks, Rick.
Uh, what about the, uh, the community mic? Did you guys test that one?
Well, all, I mean, all the mics are on the same, it was the input we were having an issue with, and, uh, true to form, uh. Unplug it and plug it back in again, solve the problem.
That's the secret to just about every tech problem.
Yeah, pretend you didn't hear that and I'll send the city an invoice.
Thank you.
Okay, we'll reopen the meeting. Um, we're, we're staff reports, uh, anything from the treasurer? Okay, um. Oh. Planning Commission.
Good evening. I hope everybody can hear me.
Let me grab that mic.
We can.
Oh. Very good. Uh, I'm Richard Rubio of the Planning Commission, and just, uh, like to notify the, um, the council. And members out there that, uh, our meeting was canceled last week, but we will have a meeting tomorrow. At 5:30 at the firehouse. And, uh, we will, uh, try to get that on Zoom, we have it set up for Zoom, but, um, if there's any problems, we'll, we'll try to work that out.
As I might have mentioned before, there is a, uh, Parks and Rec meeting scheduled for the fire hall tomorrow evening, so your meeting will be held here at the community room.
Oh.
So will they be able to have Zoom in his room?
Uh, Chairman Rubio has been given a link to Zoom, and he can open up a Zoom meeting if he chooses to, yes.
Setting, I'm setting that up, so.
Fantastic.
Okay, thank you.
How, how do we, how do we get a connect for it, if it's not the city's Zoom mater- uh, machine, how do we connect to it?
Well, there will need to be the Zoom meeting ID established if it hasn't already been, and then when I post the agenda for the Planning Commission tomorrow, it'll be listed on that information.
Thank you.
Anybody else, anybody, anybody else, uh, the, from the staff? Okay, I got everybody, okay, council reports. Councillor Kandev?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, been attending what I can. And have been recently at an American Medical Association meeting, where one of the topics was. The handling of public intoxication and the. Benefits of sobering centers to communities. In the course of this, I called up Chief Wright and asked him for some technical input on some of the. Things that were in the draft report, and the chief was able to say. These are the laws I need to work with, these are the laws I don't need to work with, this is the experience I have, these are the laws that police can enforce fairly. These are the laws that police can't enforce fairly. Uh, we are so fortunate to have such a trove of information. In our human resources and in Chief Wright, I am honored to seek his counsel and honored to have him in our community. So that's one thing, I'd like to also be the first on this to congratulate. The apparent winners of the city council elections, uh, council member Lesnow for reelection, and council member-elect, uh. Phillips, um, I would like to very much thank council member candidate, Richard Rubio, for stepping forward. And I look forward to all three of these folks in long-term service for our city. I think that's very, very good. Other activities, I think I can probably best put in written reports, so I'll attempt to do that later. Thank you so much, and I'm so glad I can be with you by Zoom.
Thank you, um, councilmember, uh, Colomore?
I, again, just like, uh.
Get your mic.
Just like Dr. Kandev, my, um, I extend my congratulations to both. Uh, Matt and Josh Phillips, and also to Richard Rubio. Good job from the three of you. Uh, on the 25th, I attended the Baker Bay resilience workshop, and that was held at the Chinooka School. And it was a really interesting workshop, Dr. Kandev, as well as, uh. Mike Casanelli were there, were present, and although we were in different tables, the issues were very interesting. And, uh, the final work piece of the workshop is coming up soon. Uh, and also I attended the gathering about the Bear Forest Trails that, uh, Matt was holding at Salt on the 26th. And basically, those are the most important, um, group meetings I attended, thank you.
Councillor Whitner?
Thank you, I'm just gonna comment on the, the audio problems that we've had for the last several weeks, and that tonight. I, I think we may have resolved, here's hoping it's permanent, um. I, I can't imagine, you know, all the people who have been turning up at all the meetings on Zoom, if they've had to, uh, deal with it. With, with that kind of sound for all that time, then, um, truly, we're, uh, we are, uh. I, I respect you, uh, persisting throughout all that, and I, I hope your. Problems are all over, and that's all I have for my report, thanks.
Thank you. Councillor Lesnow?
Yeah, we'll have, uh, uh, councilmember Whitner in charge of the audio next, uh, next meeting then. Um, no, I, uh, I, I can't believe it's been, we haven't had a meeting since we had the, um, Berage Community Forest, uh, open house at Salt. Um, so I will report on that, uh, sincere thank you to, uh, Jules and Leila, uh, for hosting us, uh, and Leah from IMBA for coming out. Uh, and running that, um, attendance was great, thank you to everybody who came, uh, provided, um, absolutely, uh, critical feedback. Uh, and Leah is diligently crunching all that, uh, for our, for our reports, um, so that was exciting to be a part of. Uh, to get, uh, get the community's feedback on, uh, our recreational efforts up there. Um, and, uh, budget meetings or budget workshops, um, those have been, um, those have been the two, uh, primary focuses, uh, mine. Oh, and I thank you, Mayor, for the reminder, um, uh, over the weekend, uh, I was fielding a number of Facebook messages and text messages, um, from, uh, from neighbors and community members. Uh, about the tinted water, uh, in, in the city of Illawko, uh, and I made it a point to follow up with, uh, the mayor and the Public Works crew, uh, this morning. Uh, I gave the mayor a call while he was in the, uh, he was at the shop, uh, with the folks from the water plant, uh, and Scott Corsi, our public's, uh, Public Works guy. Um, the Public Works lead, he basically came down to a, uh, pump that was inadvertently left engaged at the, um, Spring Street, I believe. Pump station, uh, basically, um, left on, drained, uh, the entirety of one of the water towers, uh, so stirred up some sediment at the bottom. Uh, and that was making its way through our distribution system, uh, and that was responsible for the tinted water. Um, so that, uh, has been, that has been remedied, the water tower is full again, uh, and we are hoping to have that. It's a logic issue, it's a software issue, a communication issue, not a mechanical one, uh, hoping to have that resolved next week, so, thanks, Mayor.
Thank you. Councilmember Coroner?
Well, I've attended, uh, several budget workshops. Um, I also was at the fire station for, uh, Halloween, and we had, uh. A hundred, uh, 1,200 plus people come through. And, um. It's, it's been very successful, the pumpkin patch, which was held the Saturday before, they went through all their pumpkins. In an hour. So Illawko's becoming very famous for Halloween, I didn't make it down to the, to Lake Street. But it, it seems like everybody is really coming to Illawko for Halloween, and, uh. My understanding is our, uh, Fire Department pub ed crew is already working on next year's Halloween and a place to go to. Because by going to the fire station, you kind of make it hard for us if we had to respond to a situation, so they're looking at another building. For next year. That's all I have, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you, uh, Mayor's report. I attended, uh, the, uh, seawater rise meeting out at the, um. Uh, Chinook School, it, like, councilman, uh, Colomore said, it, it was very interesting. Um, this was a third, third meeting and a, and a three-meeting, uh, group, and, uh. We're gonna try to wrap everything up and, and come back with results, uh, here not too long, and of course, as everybody knows, the city, the city got, um. How much money was it for, um, study? On the, um, sea level rise, and I'm sure this information will go with it, the watershed group got us, um.
I believe it's about $125,000.
Right, $125,000 to, to do this study for Illawko, and we, we've come up with some really good information for the city of Illawko. And how to, you know, how to look at what will, just, you know, wags about what's gonna happen with, if we get sea level rise.
Um, a point of clarification, Mayor, I would like to point out that this is going to be a, a study that's required for coastal communities, um, in the, in the Growth Management Act. Um, so this is, is something that we've been receiving grant money for, uh, but it's also, uh, going to be, uh, a requirement for us, uh, to complete. So this isn't something that's, um, this definitely isn't a waste of time, effort, or money, uh, on the city's part.
Great, thanks for the information, I hadn't heard that yet. This is another unfunded. Uh, sure, um, that's about all, all I have to say, um, one of the things on, on the brown, on the brown water. The way that there was nothing unhealthy about, about the water, it was more or less when, when they started to fill it and started to make the corrections, it. It stirred up the bottom of the tank, and mostly what it was, was termiti. Right term, so, um, and they did some tests, and it, everything tested, there was nothing harmful in, in that, so it was safe to drink. Um, that's all my report, um, now we have comments of citizens and guests present, and I think you're the first one signed up there. Uh, step forward and introduce yourself and.
Hi, good evening, everyone, I'm staff here, Mayor, well. Um, I came here because, um, I wanted to tell you about the homeless person that I am. I lived in a community of an ocean park for 28 years, and somehow that all got slid down, I don't know where, into the, the Muckmire. So I am currently homeless, I have nowhere to go tonight. And, uh, it's cold, getting colder and colder all the time. I am working with CCA, with Nandy Williams and Dawn, they are my advocates here in Long Beach. I grew up here, we moved here my sixth grade summer, and I've been, I've been back and forth here, but lately, I've been here 40 years again. And I see the, I see Illawko's really growing very well, and, um, I just want to say that I have no place to go tonight, and I am scared for my life right now. For some reason, I don't know why, but I'm getting eerie feelings. So if you could help remedy that tonight for me, tomorrow may be a different day. So, um, I just want to say that, I'm so grateful to be here, and if there's any volunteer work that you need to have done around here, please let me know, I'm a gardener. I'm a cook, I'm a waitress, and I'm a CNA, and I thank you for listening to me.
Thank you. Um. Dawn? Do you want to go last, or do you want me to call?
Uh, yes, I'm Don Berger, and lived in Illawko since 2003, and I've noticed that there's been a lot of things that. Have come be for the city that, uh, basically I feel were not good for the city, however. As one person put it, uh, Illawko was here before I got here, and it's gonna be here after I'm gone. But I also represent the Aircraft Owners and Pilots Association, and, and concerned about. The airport and the city, because they jointly have a play in how things are done on city property. Has a dedicated taxiway, and the airport, of course, has a dedicated airport. And so trying to work between the city and the Illawko City Council has, uh, been a bit of a challenge. Uh, so, what I think I'll try to do first is try to put things on the agenda. Uh, because it's not so much what are in the ordinances, it's what's not in the ordinances. And so I would like to get some things straightened out, to have the ordinances changed to, uh, favor. The, uh, Vandelia taxiway, and to favor the airport, which is the, uh, port of Illawko. So I'm working on it with two different agencies, which is a bit difficult. But I wanted to start out with the agenda and get it, uh, nailed down to. If I'm allowed to have things put on the agenda, or whether it has to go through a city council member to be put on the agenda, so I would. Uh, like to get something from the city to, uh, tell me the procedure for putting things on the agenda. And I'll leave it at that for tonight, like I say, I've identified 25 different things for the city, and 11 things for the port. That I feel need to be, uh, addressed, and so, uh, we'll just start with. The agenda, whether we can have it and have a vote by the city council people on various items, thank you.
Thank you. Um. Anybody on Zoom? I don't see any hands up at the moment, but. I don't see any hands up at the moment. Is there anybody on with a public comment on Zoom? Last call. Anybody for public comment on Zoom? Okay. Thank you. Um. The next thing on the agenda is the, um, is a public hearing, um, on the preliminary budget. See, it's, um, at six twenty-eight right now, we'll open this hearing. Uh, this hearing is for the purpose of reviewing the twenty twenty-four preliminary budget. Preliminary numbers have been released to the public and is also presented here too. Additional electronic copies are available upon request or hard copies are available at Illawako City Hall. Okay. Uh, nobody signed in on this. I don't think you knew, but is there any, anybody, um, has any comment on the budget at the moment? Wait, ma'am, wait till it, okay, wait till it, th- this is a public hearing on the, on the bu- this on the budget. When we come out of the budget, I'll let you. We only, normally only allow you to speak once, but I'll allow you to speak again. Okay, um, anybody on Zoom? I see any hands. Anybody got comment on the budget? Don? Come on, so they can.
My basic interest, as I live in Vandelia and we have been paying for stormwater for, gosh, I don't know, ten years or more, and the streets haven't been repaired. And originally, we thought that we were getting the open ditch system eradicated and putting in a piping system to be filtered before it goes into the Wallicut River and sidewalks put in and streetlights and all of that. And I do see in one of the, uh, things that came out a few weeks or months ago, where they had Vandelia scheduled for, uh, twenty-three, I believe, or no, this is twenty, twenty-five, a couple of years from now. Uh, as I look at the sides of the streets are doing, the south sides is basically unit one. I see a lot of encroachments of property owners that have things that are really in the city streets. And it's going to be interesting to see how they're going to be able to do this project without really causing a lot of problems. So I don't know how they're going to address that. I'm not sure that the one million eight hundred thousands are going to take care of it. But, uh, anyway, uh, of course, I'd like to see the project started and I, I guess we'll just stay tuned and see if it actually comes to being. Thank you.
Thank you, Don. Anybody else? Anybody else on, on, anybody on Zoom? With nobody on Zoom, I will close the public hearing at, uh, six thirty-one. Okay, ma'am, did you have something else you wanted to say or? Okay. Thank you. Thank you for your comments. Okay. Moving on, we've got, um, my mouse here. The, um, next thing on the budget is the amendment number three to engineering services at Wildon Road. Now, we've discussed this, we discussed this, I think, at one of the budget meetings, so it's out here for, um, for us to, uh, put amendment on. The Grand Osborne has requested an amendment to job number nineteen four fifty-nine, engineering, construction management services for Wildon Road project. Um, the specifics, specifics are that, um, uh, explanation for the amendment request is provided in the body of the amendment document attached with this briefing. They were, um, they did work, pre-work that they were never paid for, for Wildon Road, and they asked us for, um, for, I don't remember how much, um, they asked us for, but we made them a counter offer and they've accepted it. This amendment will increase the engineering and construction management expense by fifty-one thousand, six hundred and eighty-three dollars and seventy-four cents. And it will be repaid, will be paid from remaining grant money for the project. So, um, with that said, basically, like I said, this was, they did some pre-engineering and, uh, we just, I would discuss this, I think, in one of our budget meetings. You have anything to say?
There was some, uh, engineering and design work done at the tail end of the project when we went out for the, uh, CDVG funding of nine hundred thousand dollar grant resource. And so the flow meter installation at the plant and the seismic valve design, uh, I, and the paving of Wildon Road, I believe, were paid from the CDVG money. And so that came, uh, there was a seventy-five thousand dollar request from Grand Osborne to cover those expenses associated with those things. And we only had this amount left in the funding from, uh, CDVG and USDARD. So that's where they settled.
Yeah, the total request was seventy-eight thousand, two hundred dollars. Um, so this is, uh, this is not, uh, impacting our, our budget at all. Correct, correct, Treasurer Beller, this is all, um, existing grants, uh, funding through the various sources. And will this finally close out the project?
So we have to have a final inspection completed by USDARD sometime in the next week or two. And we do have our affidavits of, um, tax payments, uh, from, uh, Department of Revenue and Employment, uh, Services, Unemployment Services. So those have been completed and it's just a, a number of small things to do before we're ready to close it out, hopefully by the end of the month.
Fantastic. Thank you.
Counselor Hallmark.
I just would like to have a little clarification. We didn't get the papers.
Margarita, can you unmute yourself?
Um, can you hear me now?
Yes, yes.
Oh, good. Thank you. Uh, yes, one of, one of the things, we, I didn't get the documents on time, the backup documents, but I was a little confused as Mike kept on talking about. Uh, they had done some free work and now we have this amount as expense. Which one is the free work you are referring to and which one is it?
It's, it's all part of the contract. I mean.
Part of the contract?
Pretty much, yes.
It was work that was done to complete the design using all of the funding sources that we acquired. But Gray and Osborne did not have a chance to amend their original contract to include that work. They, um, forfeited giving us amendment until the end of the project to see if there was any funds left over.
Okay, and so they are taking this amount left over as full payment. Okay, thank you.
Uh, yeah, motion to move it to business.
Second.
Second.
Yeah, but mo- a motion to move to business, motion made by Counselor Lesnow, a second by, uh, Counselor, uh, Whitner. Uh, all in favor?
Aye.
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 Dave? Anyway, um, all in favor?
Yeah, we just.
To move to business?
Yeah.
Did we vote?
We.
Well, Counselor Kandup hasn't voted. All right, okay.
All opposed?
All opposed? Hearing none? Uh, we must have one abstention. So, so pass. We're in business. Um, I have a motion.
Sure. Uh, Mr. Mayor, I move to authorize a mayor execute amendment number three to contract for provisional engineering services for job number nineteen four fifty-nine in the amount of fifty-one thousand, six hundred and eighty-three dollars and seventy-four cents.
Seconded.
I have a motion made by, uh, Counselor Lesnow, seconded by Counselor, uh, Whitner to, um, have the mayor pay, execute amendment number three to the contract for paying for the services in the amount of fifty-one thousand, six hundred and eighty-three, seventy-four. Uh, all in favor?
Aye.
May I take a roll call vote, Mr. Mayor? And I believe Councilmember Kinda passed his hand up on Zoom.
I would.
Councilmember Kinda passes his hand up on Zoom if you wanted.
Oh. Counselor Kandup, go ahead.
Yes, um, I was going to say that the description given in the packet, uh, which I presume is the entire communication on the point, looks rather vague. Um, I was taking a call, by the way, from Pastor Louise Buckles at Peninsula Poverty Response. And she asks that our friend in the room who needs housing stay put for a while until she can get hold of her. And if we can, if we can try and help that way, that would be very helpful if she could stay, uh, till either Pastor Buckles arrives or the end of the meeting. Um, so that was why I was distracted and I simply don't have the detail of information to vote anything but abstain on this one. And I wanted that on to the record.
Good, thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember Kinda, for your work.
Did we vote on this?
No.
It's a roll call vote.
Yeah, I'll do a roll call vote. So Councilmember Kinda, if I heard you, you're abstaining, but if you'd like to reaffirm, Councilmember Kinda?
Abstaining, that's right.
Councilmember Colomore? Councilmember Whitner?
Aye.
Councilmember Lesnow?
Aye.
And Councilmember Foreigner?
Nay.
We have three ayes, so it will still carry.
Okay, so pass. Okay, um. The next one is, uh, establish the full-time fire chief position. Um, we okay, we've, um, uh, the treasurer, do you want to take this one? This is kind of in your snow, you don't?
I'm happy to take it.
Oh, you want to take it? Go ahead.
Um, so, uh, currently, we've gone over this on a couple of different budget, uh, workshops, I believe, too, um, that had a, uh, decent attendance from, from council members present. And, uh, thank you to the fire chief, uh, and thank you, uh, Administrator Beller for, uh, putting the figures together. Um, currently, it's our, uh, it's our desire to, uh, further the establishment of the fire department, which will benefit this, benefit the citizens by prioritizing health and safety responses of highest level of care, pre-hospital care, and I'll put that in, uh, emphasis. Um, the mayor would like to extend a formal job offer to our current fire chief. Uh, Chief Jeff Archer is a full-time fire chief for the city of Illawako Fire Department, creating a salaried full-time fire chief position will allow the fire chief to focus solely on the citizens of Illawako. The chief has demonstrated the ability to apply for and receive grants, established, uh, basic life transport services and negotiate inter-local agreements with other agencies. The fire chief implemented administrative policies benefiting the departments and its volunteers, which has also greatly increased membership and morale of the volunteers in the department. Um, impacts fiscal annual salary benefits in the amount of a hundred and sixteen thousand, eight hundred and ninety-nine dollars will be budgeted for the twenty twenty-four Fire Fund one oh five. Um, this has been, uh, I don't believe, uh, this has been, or this necessitates review by legal, uh, but we've consulted with, uh, MRSC, um, comparing, uh, salaries of equivalent or, uh, semi, uh, sizable jurisdictions, uh, that are close to Illawako's, um, population and size, geographical side. Um, yeah, uh, this is something, uh, this is something I support. Um, I think, uh, Chief Archer, uh, and the team he has assembled, um, they're doing a tremendous job, uh, in increasing the standard of care, uh, of the, for the citizens of Illawako, uh, as well as the surrounding communities, uh, performing intra-facility transports, uh, for, uh, Pacific County Fire District One, uh, as well as Ocean Beach Hospital. Uh, and they've run many, many calls, um, or not, uh, not calls, but, uh, answered the call, uh, for those transports, uh, many, many times since we started doing that in the summer, I believe. Mayor, is that correct? Administrator Beller? Sometime in the spring or summer?
It was spring. I believe our first transport was in April.
Um, so we, uh, working through the budget workshops, um, it, I believe the confidence was high, in my case it was anyway, um, that the, uh, revenue associated with these extra, uh, efforts, uh, from our personnel, from our volunteers and from the fire chief, um, would be, uh, would cover this, uh, the cost, uh, impact to our budget for twenty twenty-four. Um, so I think this is, this is a strategic move for the city of Illawako. Uh, this is an important move for the city of Illawako, uh, to continue to provide that high standard of care and even provide greater assets moving forward, um, like, uh, uh, community paramedicine efforts, uh, that we can receive funding for to staff, uh, a, in, in aid car to go around the community. Uh, I think this is a great idea and a great opportunity to keep Jeff, uh, Chief Archer, uh, working on improving the department and our city.
Mr. Mayor?
Counselor Kandup had his hand up.
Okay, let, let, go ahead, let him, he's on.
Okay, Counselor Kandup?
Okay, thank you, Mr. Mayor, and thank you, Councilmember Foreigner. I am really enthusiastic about Chief Archer. I am looking at the number, quality and enthusiasm of the people of the city fire department, and I'm seeing every one of those three increase. And if you got greater numbers, greater quality and greater enthusiasm, you're a great leader. So I'm very enthusiastic about Chief Archer and his work with us and very much hope that we can keep him. That being said, I think we're ready to reserve the money, but I am disappointed by the thinness of the packet. We're asking the citizens of Illawako to pay more for fire chief services at a time when the budget is difficult and we're talking about some very hard choices. I think it's entirely possible that this is exactly the right thing to do, but I'm not prepared to vote for this without seeing a job description, without seeing a justification of the additional hours. I have no doubt that such a justification is possible, but I think we owe it to our citizens to have it in the packet. So at this point, I am a yes on Chief Archer and a no on this specific hiring, but I would like to be a yes by the time in the next council meeting.
Thank you. Counselor.
I, I totally support this. Um, and in the packet or in our procedures and policies for hiring people, there is a job description for the fire chief. And I think Chief Archer's been doing an excellent job. I have actually worked with him for the last twenty-three years. We've done, uh, inner facility transfers all over the state and to Oregon. His attitude about making Illawako one of the finest fire departments on the peninsula is, is his goal. He already has a five-year plan set up for what he wants to get done. I'm not overly concerned about the salary and benefits because I think, uh, the inner facility transfers, uh, those dollars are going to help out on this. So I'm full agreement on giving him his wage and benefits.
So, um, I, I'd like to offer, oh, I'm sorry, Councilmember Whitner and Colomore, we've not heard from you yet.
I'm in support of the motion as it exists and, uh, I will defer to Councilmember Colomore.
I'm completely supporting, uh, the hiring of, uh, Chief Archer. It's more, I'm really surprised that this had not been done before. It should have been done before. And the annual salary and benefits doesn't seem excessive to me. However, uh, I would like to see the background documents. Uh, I don't think that anybody wants to have, uh, to be hired full-time and extended all those, the, the job without having the proper documentation backing him up. And so I think that if in the next meeting, we can bring together the information, the backup information with the hiring as a full-time, um, uh, chief, I think it would be perfect. At this moment, uh, no, I, I, it's not complete. This is very ambiguous. And if I were the employee, the person being hired, I would like to see the backup documentation in black and white.
So at this point, I'd like to offer some clarification. Um, if you look in your, uh, council packet, uh, on exhibit A, um, oh, I don't think I can see a page, forty-two of sixty-three of the PDF. Um, so these are the fire position, uh, grades and brief descriptions that we've always used. Uh, and beyond that, you'll see our adopted pay tables for twenty twenty-four of city of Illawako exempt annual salary scale. Um, Chief. Um, Chief Archer was always on this pay scale, but, and correct me if I'm wrong, Administrator Beller, but he was taking a percentage of that pay based on hours. Uh, agreed to, uh, by the mayor and, uh, the fire chief.
Yes, he was taking twenty-five percent pay.
Right, so he's always been, uh, adhering, uh, to, to the descriptions that he could, adhering to the duties that he could. And in adherence to, um, the, the salary level based on, um, based on our table. Um, so this isn't, and you'll also see his, his offer letter, uh, dated November thirteenth, I believe, um, at, uh, as page.
Forty-one.
Forty-one, thank you, Councilmember Forner of our council packet. Um, I, I do, I do believe, uh, the, uh, mayor and the fire chief. Can work together to update, uh, the descriptions of Fire Chief eight and nine. Uh, now that we're basing them on a full-time, uh, a full-time role instead of a part-time role. Um, but I don't believe, uh, I believe that's something that the fire chief and the mayor can work collaboratively on and not something that should hold up. Uh, should hold up this offer. Uh, so at this time, uh, I would make a motion to move this to business.
Second.
Okay, I have a motion in the second to, uh, move, um, sending a letter of, uh, formal full-time offer to the fire chief. All in favor?
Hi.
Hi.
Hi. Opposed?
Me.
Okay, we have three, three, four, so we're moving to, uh, business.
Mr. Mayor. Oh, I don't think so.
Oh, he, he raised his hand, I'm sorry.
For I or nay?
Nay. Along with Counselor, uh, uh, excuse me, Colomore.
Uh, Mr. Mayor, I moved authorize the mayor to extend a formal full-time offer of employment to the fire chief effective January first, two thousand twenty-four. And to include said expenditures in the two thousand twenty-four budget.
Second.
I have a motion from, uh, Councilman Lesnow, uh, and a second from Counselor Forner. To, uh, authorize the mayor to extend a formal letter for full-time employment for the fire chief on January one, two thousand twenty-four. All in favor?
Hi.
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 Hi. Uh, opposed? An, um, absentee, abstentions?
Hi. The word is, the word is abstain, and yes, I would like to abstain. I do not want a no vote to be the last word on the subject. And I do not think that this was properly prepared or presented. So I'm going to go to abstain to make sure that it doesn't get interpreted as a negative vote for our fire chief and the person of the fire chief.
Yeah, I, I would, uh, go along with that, even if it were to, if, even if we would have discussed that, uh. It would have been a retroactive hiring, at least to present the full package as it needed to be done. And then with a retroactive hiring date, that would have been a, a good possibility. But as I say this, I'm going to abstain.
Thank you. Two abstentions and three, four. So three, two abstentions and three, four. So the. Uh, motion passed, the ayes have it. Okay, uh, fire, fireworks display. This comes, it seems kind of funny arguing that you haven't even got Christmas here and we're talking about the Fourth of July. But if you don't order by now, you don't get them. And then they've already sold them to somebody else.
Can we collectively stop skipping Thanksgiving? Please, Thanksgiving is a holiday.
What? I said Christmas, I skipped Thanksgiving.
I know, everybody does.
Well, you, you got, you're killing a turkey, you know.
Hey.
Um, anyway, what, and, and we have to, uh, we have to order now in order to get these and get them set up for us to have. And last year, I think we discussed the fact that, um, the price is going to go up by approximately five thousand dollars. And that's exactly what it did. And they're going to give us some more, um, some more, uh, cannons and I don't know what all they're going to shoot off and, uh. We will, uh, have a much, they say a little bit longer display this time around. So. That's, um, and like I said, the funding, primarily the funding comes from ten thousand dollars from the LTAC funds, the Port of El Waco. And the El Waco merchants each contribute twenty-five hundred dollars. And approximately five hundred, five thousand dollars comes from donations. So, um. That's how, that's how the fund, this has been reviewed by, um, the city attorney. It's been, uh, uh, and approved, the treasurer and, uh. The insurance company has covered us. So all we got to do is pass this and order our fireworks.
So if we have, um, we have ten thousand from LTAC, twenty-five hundred and, uh. Oh, Merchants Association does twenty-five hundred, approximately five thousand comes from donations. Is the delta just LTAC? Because that doesn't, that doesn't add up to twenty grand. Right. So I'm assuming, I'm assuming our LTAC, uh, our LTAC revenues are increasing year over year. So we, we expect.
We get twenty-five hundred dollars each from the Port of El Waco and the El Waco Merchants Association for five thousand, with five thousand coming from donations.
Thank you for that clarification.
You're welcome. That, it took me a second.
That's just what I was going to say. So it's fully, fully covered. Um, Counselor, uh. Oh, Kinda, uh, Colomore, excuse me.
Doctor, I.
Go ahead.
Oh, okay. Uh, you know, in this day and age when, uh, we know that. There are many alternatives to having fireworks. El Waco has a wonderful fireworks, uh, display. However, it is still, uh, big source of pollutant and other negatives that we might attach to it. And my question is, why haven't we thought about, uh, scaling down rather than increasing the displays as in this apparent country? It is instead of increasing the display, diminishing it and having, do I hear some music?
Uh, you hear me trying to mute and having trouble shooting in a hurry?
Okay, and then, um, uh, instead. Why not explore what other countries are more advanced than we are, like so many European, so have been using laser technology? Laser that is as, um, requires as much skill or much more skill than just shooting up things into the air. And, uh, the beauty of it is greater if, or as good as the displays. So I would have, uh, liked to see that we are exploring something other than shooting, um. A fire into the air. So that, that is my comment, my initial comment as I was reading this, spending. A ten thousand in displays rather than five thousand in this and five thousand in laser technologies. And being able to combine and start moving into the, into the future rather than being stuck in the past.
Councilman, Councilman Colomore, if you're, if you're passionate about finding alternatives, uh, to the, the fireworks show. Um, I would encourage you to, to look into those, uh, and present those to us. Um, I, for one, am in support of, uh, continuing our, uh, great, uh, uh, great display. Uh, the year after, we've, we've had fireworks banned now in city limits for one year. Uh, I believe the, um, the alternative, uh, is. The alternative that we provoke, proposed leading up to that ban was always the professional show. Uh, it draws a great crowd every year. Uh, it's one of my favorites, um, uh, favorite perks of living in El Waco. I love to see it every year, uh, from my house. Uh, and I would eagerly, uh, see this continue into the future.
It is, it, it is, it is great to have that great crowd. However, you know, you could be having. The same beautiful display that you get at your house or from your house, you would be getting it with some laser technologies. And if you have seen some of those displays that we see in other countries, and even in this country, you would be absolutely fascinated. By what clean technologies can do in, uh, attracting big crowds, huge crowds, actually.
I would echo, uh, both Councilman, uh, Colomore and Councilman Lesnow on this, that, that, um, that, that is a very. Nice alternative to think of, that, uh, we wouldn't have to deal with noise pollution, pollution, pollution. And, um, an extraordinary, more modern show. And that if that's something that interests us, my next move is, is to look around and see if there is, um, such a. Uh, a, a company that's going, that is able to provide that for us, what it would cost and so forth. And, uh, and we can make this something more than a, a vague idea and something that we can actually look into. Um, so, so that's it. I'm support, I'm in support of the motion as it exists.
Mr. Mayor, um.
Uh, Doctor Conde has his hand raised, I.
Oh.
I can't see the screen.
Sorry.
Okay, thanks again for that courtesy and I'm very much aware that nobody can see my, no, some people can't see when my hand is up. And of course they do what we do, it's, which is speak up. And I'm glad people speak up, but thank you for the courtesy of letting me in. I agree with everyone and therefore I would propose that we do what we know people have fun with for two thousand twenty-four. Because this is a timely thing and we don't have confidence either of getting a technically. Adequate show for two thousand twenty-four. Or that the public will enjoy it the way they seem to enjoy the, the explosive fireworks show. I'm very much aware that Councilmember Colomore is right, there is a substantial environmental impact. And I would love to see us find a way of giving a similarly effective and fun show. At lower environmental cost. But I don't think doing it in a hurry is going to get us the results we want. So I would continue to do for two thousand twenty-four what our partners expect us to do. And the time to start researching this is very soon. I don't expect I would have much time to research it. It sounds as if Councilmember Colomore might. And we may very well find that the vendor who sells us fireworks would be very willing to sell us a different service. At some point in the future, if we decide that's what we want. So I think we have a couple of ways of exploring this. And I very much hope we can find something that's just as much fun and more environmentally sound. I don't think that we're going to be able to do that between now and the time contracts need to be locked in for July fourth. So I think we go ahead with the familiar, even if it's not perfect. And that would be my vote on this current thing, but I'm also very much hoping we can look at options. Thank you.
I tend to agree with you, Counselor Conde.
Thank you, Doctor. Good night.
Gary.
Sorry, sorry, Gary.
Um, I am in agreement with, uh, Dr. Conde and the, and the mayor that we should move forward on this. Um, the, uh, Professional Fireworks, uh, Association has been looking at the pollution caused by. Lot of the fireworks, paper and that kind of stuff. They're attempting to get away from plastic, which most of your, um. Fireworks, uh, that you buy locally have the non-commercial fireworks, I should say. And I have watched some of the alternatives to fireworks, but I'm a fireworks lover and I like the noise and I like the lights. And, um, but I'm also in agreement that maybe. After passing this on that we look, there might be alternatives out there. That's it.
May I just clarify one thing? Oh, okay, thank you. Uh, I just would like to clarify and to add that this is place of laser technologies. And these shows that we see, that we have seen in other places, they are complete, they are not just the light that you see. But they are complete with, with, of course, the movement, the sound, the music. They are absolutely stunning. And I think that, yes, we really need to be looking into. Into cleaner, friendlier technologies and more advanced technologies in a, in a time. When we really need to be, uh, conscious about that environment. And the impact, the negative impacts that our activities have on it. Thanks. And that was all I needed to clarify.
Motion to move it to business.
Second. Have a motion in the second to move business. Um, all in favor?
Hi.
Hi.
Counselor Conde, did you vote aye? How did you vote?
I voted aye, Mr. Mayor, and I'm also watching the clock and hoping our friend is still in the room with Pastor Buckles on our way.
Yeah, she is, she is.
Yes.
And, 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 uh, Counselor Quintner, how did I? Is it I too? Okay, I, it all came together, that's why I'm asking. I didn't get a clear, didn't get a clear deal on it. And one of the reasons we don't see your hand is because I'm the only one in here besides Holly that has a, has everybody on their screen. So some of the council members can't see everybody because they're not on their screens or following, uh, the, the text. Okay, we have a motion in a second, all in favor?
We've already taken the vote. Mr. Mayor, I authorize a mayor enter into the two thousand twenty-four Independence Day fireworks display at the port with Western display fireworks in the amount of twenty thousand dollars.
Second.
Have, have a motion in a second, motion by Counselor Lesnow and seconded by, uh.
Give it to.
Counselor Conde, um, to, uh, authorize the mayor to enter into a twenty-four, uh, twenty twenty-four Independence fireworks display at the port. Um, any other? All in favor?
Hi.
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 We got. Uh, opposed? Uh, uh, did both you count, I, I didn't hear that. Did both, um, uh, day, uh, Conde and, uh, and, uh. Colt, Quintner, did you both vote aye? Okay, I heard.
I've, I've voted aye, Mr. Mayor, thank you very much.
Thank you. Yeah, four, four and one against, so the, the motion carries. Um, that's all we have.
Motion to adjourn.
And thanks to whoever is holding the room.
Second.
Buckles arrival.
So we're adjourned.
We're still.